We will, uh, we will call the work session to order. This is our March 29th work session for our April the 2nd board meeting. Um, and we have, folks are arriving now, but we will go ahead and get started. The first thing that's actually not on here is Jennifer Prather is coming from Main Street to show the board their possible banner options for Russell Street. So, um, she's got some pictures around and I don't know, did you have a power?
I don't know that it made it onto the actual screen.
Okay, that's all right. Well, everybody's got one at their desk, but if you would just tell the, uh, folks what your, what is your plan on doing?
Sure, I'm actually coming in the capacity of Main Street Director. Taz Fulford is with me, he is our design committee chair.
I'm sorry, I should've been in the business, Taz.
So he's gonna kind of back me up because I know that he's had the discussions about some options as far as right of way goes. What you're looking at is a project that Main Street is wanting to take on and it's a banner installation project. It would be a permanent installation at the corner of Russell Street at Highway 12. So if you're crossing, um, Highway 12 on Russell coming from campus, that is the main entryway to our downtown. That is our gateway to the main entrance. And so, um, obviously we know that corner right now doesn't look very good and we're always looking for ways that we can better promote the events and activities that we have going on in town. So what we are proposing is that Main Street spend the money to have some really nice banner frames done and installed. And these banners would then be designed and switched out seasonally to reflect the different events that we have going on in town. Not necessarily just our events, and when I say our events, I mean Pumpkinpalooza, City Y Tailgate, things like that, but also events that are hosted by the Horse Park, um, the Arts Council, the Symphony, um, groups like that. And what we're asking for the city to do is approve this framework, the actual installation that could be installed in the city right of way, um, and approve the banner framework. And so if you flip to page three of your packet that I gave you, um, this is the actual framework that we are looking at. And what this is, and the reason that it's blank, is because any organization, say the Arts Council, that comes to us and wants to promote the Starkville Arts Festival, for instance, their, their artwork would be dropped into this framework. So this would stay, always stay the same and the individual artwork would be dropped in. And so the banners would be constantly rotating throughout the year. Athletics could even, you know, use one if they wanted to put something up about, um, Final Four, SEC Tournament. Um, and what we're asking you guys to do is approve the banner framework and let us approve the artwork that is dropped in each time.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. One, basically, this is just clear, you drop it in. And then two, there's a note on the, is there gonna be electricity provided, believe?
So, we have not gotten that deep into it. We do hope that we can work with the city to light these. Um, this obviously is a very rough rendering. I had Mitchell signs, um, do a rendering of what this would look like. This is not the exact location they will be in, so we would have to work with Edward and other people to figure out where to put them. Um, but we would also hope to be able to do some up lighting so that you could see them.
Be a good opportunity to hide these big transformer bases.
No, I think it's a great, great idea and because I've noticed myself, anytime the type of game day, Mystic State puts those, uh, I guess you might call them a blacker, but they put the devices out in the middle that tells everybody what's going on that weekend. So, you know, from a town and gown perspective, then somebody look to the right and see what the town's doing, look left, see what the university's doing. So, I mean, I do think this is a good idea.
Um, if you're familiar with Jackson, when you come off of, um, I think it's 55, when you come into State Street in Jackson, when you enter their downtown, they have those huge banner installations and we've kind of modeled it after that. They use it for their theater, their symphony and things like that. Um, the Convention and Visitors Bureau supports numerous organizations through a grant process. We give funding to the Horse Park, the Arts Council, the Community Theater, um, many, many different groups that I should've brought you a list. And my thoughts are that those groups could apply to install a banner. The banners would be designed by the same designer so that they look consistent and they would be purchased with the same company so that we know that the quality that's going up all looks the same.
Okay, hold on.
What type of framework is that?
It is a, if you look at the second page, there's some specs, but it is a black metal tubing. It's like a galvanized aluminum type tubing, yes.
Had it been approved by the board, or let me say by Daniel Lim, if it's properly as he says?
Oh, yeah, no, Daniel Lim wouldn't, wouldn't have an issue with it as long as it's, as long as it's.
And Daniel has.
Daniel has seen them and has looked at the sign ordinance and with these. Now, I wish he was here to, to tell us. He, what he said was that since it was in the city right of way and it was only for things that we were approving, that it shouldn't be an issue.
Well, it'd be the cities to decide. So it's, yeah, it's our right of way, absolutely.
There's, there's no damage, if somebody's misdirected, run over them.
Right, and that's, that's sort of my question. Does it, um, does it, Edward?
Edward?
Does it impact with sight lines in any way?
We would look at that, uh, for the exact placement, developing, looking at the site visibility.
And that's one thing I want to stress, what you're seeing in this picture is not what it would finally be. It's just a rendering of what it could look like.
People will run over, you need to think.
That's what I'm saying. Run over and then it belong to the city and we liable, if somebody gets hit, that's what I'm saying. But you say it's a, it's a, oh, aluminum light.
Yes. And so what we would look at doing is once we got the approval for the location, whether it needed to have some landscaping around the bottom of it and then the lighting. Um, and our thought is that the board could approve the actual installation and the framework of the design and then, um, it'd be very inclusive on who can have the banner. So you see, uh, the Symphony is just the example that we use here. Um, this, if you look at the page three, that's the way the layout of the banners will always be. So it'll almost read like a billboard. You know, you're not, you're gonna have to keep some consistency since they're all three being together, but you might see, um, you know, the dog show at the Horse Park on one and Pumpkinpalooza on one and then the Jazz Symphony on the other one. So they're very, um, and then it might also change to where we do one that has our fall lineup, um, because sometimes we have so many things going on that it would be better to do a date lineup and it would, it'd be more cost effective for us to do one banner with all the dates on it. Um, we want to make it feasible for organizations that can't afford a banner for every single event, um, to reuse one over and over again. So we're looking at options of not putting dates on them and directing the traffic to the website so that they get, they see the event, that they can go dig deeper for the information.
It's also informative too. I mean, it's not, it's just an information opportunity as well, so.
Right, right.
All right.
So we don't want it to be cluttered at all.
Right, okay. But let's not use the word billboard, please.
No, it reads like that, but it is not a billboard.
I see. Just cut billboard from it.
But the way you see the banners laid out is the way that they will be laid out when they're installed.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any heartburn with moving forward to that?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Sorry, sorry for not getting you on the, on the written agenda anyway. All right, so, um, our first item is for Mr. Kemp. If you'll look back over here, and I'm sure Matt will point the camera that way, if you look back over behind you, uh, and in front of us, we've got, uh, the sidewalks, uh, presentation from Mr. Kemp along the wall here. And this is the proposal for, um, the use of the funds that we have been talking about that came from that same group of funding that allowed us to landscape along Highway 12. So, uh, with that, Mr. Kemp, I will turn that to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, appreciate this opportunity. I do want to introduce, uh, for those that don't know him, Mr. Wayne Black. He is with Garber Engineering and he is helping us on this project. Um, the city has entered into a contract with Garber to assist with this project and, uh, we've really made a lot of good strides. I think we're to the point, um, if y'all remember, when we approved this project, we said we would come back with, uh, cost and, uh, different sections, uh, for the board to review. And so that's where we are today. Uh, we've gone and we've met with MDOT, uh, we've received some, some input, um, um, of different folks and we've put together a cost estimate basically on all the sections that we feel like are feasible, um, for Highway 12, really starting at Stark Road and coming all the way east to campus. As y'all know, we do have a TAP project that has recently been approved that is not a part of this, but will tie into this directly and take the sidewalks and multi-use path on into campus. But what we want to do today is kind of go over these different segments, give you the costs, and then at the end, we're, we're going to present a recommended prioritized, um, project based on the, about allowable funds that we have and based on the cost that Wayne has developed. So, you have a question?
That was gonna be my question. The recommended priority, will that be where you start from the east and head west or is that gonna be where you patch it as you go?
It's, it's, uh, it's really kind of a little bit of both. And, and our objective on that was to get the most bang for our buck. So those areas where we know that people are already using it, that is somewhat cost effective to do it, those obviously moved up, um, higher. But you also, to your point, want to create long segments that are continuous as well. So we tried to keep that in mind. Um, on the first page, um, the, the, I'm, I'm, copy here, um, the side that has the maroon on the top, that's where we're gonna kind of start and we'll go through sections. Each section is, is a segment or an intersection and I think we go A through M. And we'll just kind of walk through those and some of the benefits of each section and some of the challenges of each section. You can see the associated cost with each of those. And then on the back, you'll see, uh, recommendation for prioritized listing. But again, this is a, you know, this is an opportunity, if you, if you feel like one segment is, is higher need than others, this is a great time to kind of let us know that. Uh, but this is based on feasibility, connectivity and, um, most cost effective. Because our, our current budget, we're in the around $360,000 range, um, no, $260,000 range, excuse me. Um, if the board chooses to, we also have another $25,000 for ADA, uh, sidewalks and ADA in the, in our, uh, regular, um, that'd be general, so you could supplement that and get it up kind of closer to the 285.
Well, and these are gonna be ADA.
They would, everything we build will be ADA. I'm saying if you want to supplement the Bully Barred Funds with some local funds as well.
Yeah.
So, um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Wayne and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be Vanna White up here and point out the different segments.
Hey, good to be here. First off, thank you all, I enjoy working with y'all, appreciate the opportunity to work again with the city. So, as Edward went over, um, we did look at, we looked at Highway 12 from end to end and we were looking, like he said, for areas that people are already walking, places of need and also places that we could cost effectively build sidewalks as well as connecting existing sidewalks.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you just for a second because I want to be real clear with everybody who's listening and, and everybody who's having interest that these are how, these funds were dedicated to Highway 12. So we're not just choosing Highway 12 because we want to, we're choosing it because that's where these funds are dedicated to go. So, all right, sorry, go ahead.
So, the maroon side of the sheet, I hand out like Edward said, they're listed A through M. So these 13 sections, this again isn't the priority. A is on the west side and we're gonna work our way back east. So, the section we looked at, uh, the first one from Stark Road to the Lowe's entrance, uh, we think is a pretty cost effective section. It'll help us connect to Stark Road. Um, it's, it's a shorter section, you can see the price there. We don't feel like this is one of the ones with maybe the most need. There's not as high of a traffic area pedestrian traffic there as some of the other ones. Uh, there's some challenges on this far west side. Some of those challenges are drainage, maintaining drainage, there's some existing ditches, there's, uh, you know, some of the Highway 12 improvements make it challenging to build a sidewalk. Um, Section B is from the Lowe's to the Kroger entrance.
Can I interrupt you? One, I'm sorry, just for your, for everybody's reference, the pink lines are existing sidewalks that have been built or are about to be built or is under development. And then the green is what the proposed sections are. So you can kind of see the overall sidewalk network and how things are kind of starting to tie together.
And what was the first section?
It is from Stark Road to Lowe's. And we're gonna, I'm gonna leave all these maps and they have these sections labeled as well as a little box up here. These wood boxes kind of tell, you know, how wide of a sidewalk we're building in that section as well as what the major cost drivers are of each section, uh, kind of how we got our price. So from Lowe's to Kroger, for example, Section B, we have, we're gonna build a five-foot sidewalk because we're off of the road, we're behind, behind the ditch through here, um, we're gonna have to reconstruct some driveway and add crosswalks. So, for that little bitty section, it gets a little costly because of having to reconstruct drives for ADA purposes, like we're discussing. Uh, drive, crossload and a crosswalk cannot be more than 2%. Most of your driveways out there are a lot steeper than 2%. So Section C is from Kroger to Taylor Street. And this one again is a pretty challenging section to build. Will one have to build it, um, right behind the curving gutter? That's because of the existing ditch, but then also you have these couple of big wide driveways here that are gonna have to be reconstruction, reconstructed to meet ADA, which is gonna drive the cost up again. And then, uh, Section D is from Taylor Street to Avenue of Patriots. As everybody knows, this is one of the higher used sections right now. There's a pretty good path worn right behind the, uh, the curving gutter now. So this one, we're gonna try to, to keep costs down. The first part of this section over here to the west, we're right on the back of curve because of where the existing ditch is and how low it is, just for drainage and constructability. Anytime we're right on the back of curve, we're gonna build a little bit wider sidewalk, a six-foot sidewalk to let, uh, pedestrian feel a little extra buffer from the road. Ideally with MDOT, you would build a three-foot buffer strip, grass strip before the sidewalk, kind of a five-foot sidewalk. But to build it, cost effectively build this section, we feel it's best to put it right behind the curve to stretch our dollars. So that's why we're going with the six foot. But then from Aston to Avenue of Patriots, there's enough room in the right of way to put, to locate the sidewalk behind the ditch there. So it'd be a lot more cost effective to build. And when we do that, again, it'll be a five-foot sidewalk. Um, let's see, the Section E is this Avenue of Patriots intersection. There's a, a bus stop here, a transit stop. And we're just looking for a way to add something here to be able to cross pedestrian, add the signal and get them to the other side of Avenue of Patriots. One day they'll be able to connect back here to Patriot Farm and stuff. So that's a, um, a smaller section, uh, pretty cost effective to build. Uh, F, let's go. Section F is down here by Enterprise. There's this new section of sidewalk that was built right here, but it has about a 20 foot gap to the road. So we wanted to go ahead and just fill that gap in so pedestrians don't have to cross that, there's a drainage coming through there, there's a little ditch, go ahead and get them back to a road so they can connect to some.
That's actually a high cross and I think a lot of people come from Long Meadow, which cuts back into Strawn High School, which cuts into that whole side of town. But, uh, so when you get the Enterprise in the car, you're gonna come up to the top of that hill and get them right up the side Highway 12?
For this one? It actually dumps out right into Lindberg.
It just jumps in?
Yeah, so basically it's, it's down.
Just right in front of that gate?
Exactly, right in front of the fence.
It's just extended straight, yeah, right over there.
Okay. And, and I could also mention, you know, there were some areas that we did not study right now because we feel like either we've had conversation or feel like there's a high development potential. These, uh, places right here, we've had conversations with developers and property owners, especially in front of the old car wash.
Yeah, Mickey's gonna develop the other thing.
So, you know, we, we didn't propose those sections. We were, we would let those developments, as they occur, build those sidewalks. And plus, they don't really connect to anything else right now anyway. So, say this now.
Section G is on the south side of 12, from the existing sidewalk here at Sun Station up to Lewisville Street. Uh, a great deal of this, a good bit of this sidewalk can be built off the road. One of the challenges is we will have to rebuild one big wide driveway there, so that's gonna drive the cost up a little bit. But this will connect an existing, a good example of connecting some existing sidewalk to this long stretch on Lewisville Street. Um, Section H is between the pawn shop here, these two existing sidewalks, the Vowels. This is also a stretch that everybody knows is being walked a good bit. There's another path worn right there in the grass. Um, we look at a couple of options here, moving it back. There's some challenges to moving the sidewalk off of the street. The ditch, uh, there's a channel flowing north and south here. We would have to build some kind of bridge or Culver Farm. Yes, sir?
How's that tied into the proposed development as far as letting the developer do it and...
I have, I have no idea when any of that is gonna occur. This is so well used right now, this is a top, has always been a top priority for me because that is so well used right now.
I wouldn't mind, we'll get into discussion of actual numerical order and waiting on them. If you're gonna wait on these other developers, I would think that would be closer in the future than other developments, you know?
Do you have some reason to think that's gonna happen in the next couple of years?
I don't have a reason not to think, I mean...
I have no reason to think, so.
All I know is I've called Post, I've called Johnny Moore's office in the immediate future and just trying to get some kind of timeline.
That would be...
And that's some, that's, I don't know, everybody in the board just needs to be open and honest. I've heard any kind of development is something the city should take on, but I mean...
You're talking about in terms of, say, a cost on the car?
Yeah, what is it called, OCTI?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it was. I have no, I've not heard any, any movement on it.
Nothing's moving on it.
I've not heard of any movement on it. I've just, that, that's been one of those areas that all along I have been wanting to do. I think you've got a huge number of people who do a lot of walking in that area. Um, so, anyway, we'll see how it goes. What's, and that strip is, um...
That is Section H.
H?
Number coming up, number three?
That's 76, 76,000? No, I'm sorry, that's...
76, that's correct.
Yeah, 76, that's correct.
Just, just asking, I, I ordered out there.
That's, uh, again, that's another section right behind the curving gutter, so it's gonna be a six-foot wide sidewalk. And we also have this Culver crossing, so we're gonna have a little handrail and such there to get people across this, this channel right here. So some of the challenges of that section, but it can certainly be built, uh, pretty physically. Section I will go from the Vowels parking lot over here to the Ruby Tuesday entrance. Um, we kind of looked, we studied this section right here through Vowels pretty hard and to build that section of sidewalk, we're gonna have to build a retaining wall and a couple of other things just to get that short section in. And we felt it was probably better use of the money, the funds right now, to tie them to the parking lot and people could walk on the backside of this island and be protected on a hard surface and get back there. So for now, that's what, that's why that section is open from this long stretch. We felt like connectivity's still there.
Yeah, they can do that.
Uh, again, this one has a, a couple of little drainage issues that are, that'll be a challenge. It's not, uh, unfeasible, but we'll have a little handrail there, a little thickened section of sidewalk to cross that pipe. Uh, Section J is the Jackson Street intersection and this little section of sidewalk in front of Giggleswood with, I wanted to point out, I forgot to mention earlier, we did look for any opportunities to cross 12 north and south in this project. So if we could, if we could find some good spots that had these north-south crosswalks that we felt people would use them, we, we looked at that stuff too. So this is just the first one and you're gonna see a couple more as we keep moving east.
Those are very rare right now. The only ones we have that are in Lewisville and they just put one at Hampton Inn. So Highway 12 in a lot of ways is a very large barrier for pedestrians.
So, the, um, Giggleswood was, is a pretty new building that doesn't have a sidewalk. I guess it didn't trigger it or was just before?
It was just before.
Just before. So, it's a short section, it's not gonna take a lot of grain. We felt like we'd go ahead and build that and then maybe this next section would redevelop at some point and then add this Jackson Street crosswalks. Um, Section K is the South Montgomery intersection. Again, we're proposing two crosswalks here. One is a north-south across 12 and then one across Montgomery here. And, um, the Section K is just this intersection. So it's a little sidewalk here on the south side of 12 to connect that existing sidewalk home south Montgomery to the intersection. And then this little, it's basically just this north-south sidewalk and these two crosswalks.
What are you trying to do out there? You're trying to get them across the street from Harvey's and then get, go heading south? There's a sidewalk.
Yeah, that, all this pink is an existing sidewalk and all this is...
What's the orange?
The orange.
In that intersection, what are the orange?
This is, there's no recent aerial since the Highway 12 project has been finished.
That's a spread sidewalk.
Yeah, all of that is the proposed improvements on 12. That's all been built now. All this stuff you can see in red and yellow is actually existing now. That was the MDOT project that happened out there.
That sidewalk's in existence. They've had trouble with it because it's had landscaping issues, but it's in existence.
This sidewalk here, you can't see it.
Yeah, it's just behind it.
And then there is discussion on this redevelopment as well. So that, that was another reason why this segment was important because that would make this whole block there and then you could use the parking lot.
Section L is gonna go from the South Montgomery intersection to Hancock Street. We have one section of sidewalk in there at Burger King already and this is a pretty economical section to build. It's gonna be six-foot unbuffered because it's, that's the only, that's the best way to build it. The right of way's kind of tight there, so we're gonna build it right behind the curve. Uh, here's a couple driveways and inlets that'll have to be reconstructed, but you, you can see this, I mean, the cost is pretty economical. And then the last one's down here at Spring Street and we actually superimposed a picture here. So we're gonna look at, uh, the last section is to connect the McDonald's sidewalk to the coffee shop parking lot. There's like a 10-foot gap there now that's not connected. And then add a, a crosswalk across Spring Street that does hit that one existing north-south crosswalk there. If you see right here, we've kind of superimposed it and built a little island on the side of 12 to protect the pedestrians as they get to that intersection. It was the best way to build it was to, to come here and tie out here in the shelter. So we're gonna do a little raise that island there. So, that's the sections west to east as they're listed here, A through M. And I'll let Edward talk about priority list.
Yeah, and I could tell you a little bit about kind of some of the, the thought process on these priority, priority lists, which is on the back sheet, it'd be the black, um, header at the top. Um, so just keep in mind, we have around, probably around 285,000-ish, 290 maybe if we take that ADA funds.
Are we hoping this is gonna come in under budget perhaps?
Yeah, I was gonna mention, we have the full cost estimates. If anybody's really interested in taking that deep dive, but one, one, a couple things. One is, um, there's a 20% contingency in all these costs, okay? Because there is, for a couple of reasons. One, we're not finished with the design, there's still some uncertainty with that. And two, there is somewhat right now a little bit of a premium on construction prices. So I, I do think that that 20% will come down. We don't know how much, but if we do get the full 20% down, we're really close to on budget. The other thing is we have used, uh, prices for this, this sidewalk construction from comparable, the, the comparable projects we've used for estimating are Lynn Lane, Lewisville Street, Loxley Way, these TAP-type projects. And this project and the process is gonna be a little bit different than those, so I think our, our overall price may come down a little bit as well. So I, you can see the subtotal's 336. I, I do think that there's some opportunity that that number is gonna be below 300, that's my hope. Um, so, when we started talking about priorities, uh, again, one of the things that is a big deterrent is crossings. And so, uh, it was kind of one thing, I, I think you get a lot of low-hanging fruit from these three intersections and making those safer. And, you know, with the TAP project, the TAP project is going to extend from this corner right in front of Hampton Inn, it's gonna follow Highway 12, it's going to cross over, um, actually crosses over Bully right back here. And then it's gonna follow this roadway that goes by Enology Building and the Sorority Row. And then it's gonna cross Bully and then come all the way into the amphitheater. So having that in mind, you know, we really wanted to... So having that in mind, you know, we really wanted to build segments that are going to connect directly to that. And so Spring Street was up there, the Montgomery Street, just be able to get across there, was up there. The Pawn Shop to Vowels is the third one, just because of the high use that's already there, and there's so much foot traffic. There's a bus stop at Vowels. Of course, the Con Acres is a high pedestrian generator. And it really kind of fills in a gap from the existing network. I mean, all of these kind of can go downtown as well as Lewisville Street, north and south. So we felt like that was a, a really good segment. The Montgomery Street to Hancock, there is a good amount of traffic, pedestrian traffic that's already using that. But the other thing we thought about is it is very unlikely in the near future that any of these three developments are going to redevelop. So this is probably your only chance to do that. And as you can see, it connects to the Hancock Circle neighborhood, all, to all this retail here. It wouldn't be too much of a stretch to think that this might redevelop in the future, so you would have that continual block all the way to Spring. Section D, the Taylor Street, was priority five. And again, that's the section in front of Green Oaks. It's basically going to connect Green Oaks to the commercial retail center down at the Kroger post office. But the other thing on that is we're keeping our fingers crossed, Gary, that we get the Mississippi Department of Wildlife Fisheries and Park grant that will hopefully bring a sidewalk from McKee Park all the way to the industrial park intersection. So that would basically allow the neighborhood of Green Oaks to, to access McKee Park and the sports place relatively easily, so we just...
That's another one where there's footpath.
There is a lot of footpath there, correct. We had section F, the enterprise rental car section, it's only six thousand dollars just to connect that, and then the Jackson Street. You know, this is, this is probably not as important, but we felt like that this intersection crossing is so important because it opens up, basically all of Pleasant Acres can now walk safely to downtown. So that subtotal is three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. Now, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to discount any of these other ones. I mean, if we had unlimited funding and we had the full budget, we would love to do all of them. And you can see where if we do have some additional funding, it would be my recommendation to do the Avenue of Patriots intersection next, and then the Vowels to the Tuesday after that. And then you really kind of start moving in a western direction after that because basically all the, all the gaps on the east side of twelve have been filled or will be filled, we feel like in a relatively short order by, by development. So I guess that is, that's kind of where I'd love to leave it as a launch point for questions and...
I see a hand up there, Mr. ...
Yeah, I'm going to probably just totally go against all of that. What I was thinking, if you said two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, it was to the dollar, my opinion, not because I'm the alderman there, but if he's talking about, this is not a Green Oaks situation, but the one in front of Green Oaks, I'll say the cow trails that I see, that's what I'm calling people trails, or the one in Con Acres and the one in Avenue of Patriots. I think everybody would say that, though I see those as the greatest concern. If you open up the Avenue of Patriots, that's a hundred-and-sixty thousand. What you're doing for a man that's coming, that lives on Main Street or in Greensboro, he rides his bike, basically if he can get to that stretch, he's got impervious surfaces from Ford Vision on. He can go to Lowe's, he can go, you know, anywhere in that shopping center and go get groceries. He can go either way and get anything in that entire shopping center. If you do the second one, I'd place on the list.
Let's, let's be really, which section?
Which would be my priority is number one Avenue of Patriots, which is section, I'd move it from, section D from five to one. That's a hundred-and-sixty thousand. The second one would be, I'd really target that area that's coming off Con Acres. If the OCTI is a dead deal right now and the water won't treat it as such, then I would say section H and I would come in at seventy-six thousand forty-nine. That's an even two-eighty-five, and I would throw a Spring. Three percent contingency, I would throw the Spring Street in there because that's a gateway to the university, and you're coming in, I mean, you're going to fall within y'all's town. I mean, what you're doing is you're not, you know, this is not a Green Oaks thing. This is not, I wish I wasn't the alderman there at the time because that travel corridor, automotive and pedestrian, I mean, people coming, that Whitfield sidewalk is getting used every day from an entire, I know people that walk from the university all the way down Main Street, down Whitfield's more of our nicest sidewalks in town. I mean, so what you've done though is just by putting sixteen-hundred and sixty-nine square foot, or foot of sidewalk is you, you've opened up from somebody coming from Mississippi State University, being able, able to ride a bike all the way to theoretically Kroger on J C Benny.
So the, the only piece that's not in what you're talking about is that section E, right?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that right now.
Oh, I thought you...
I guess section...
He's talking about D, I think.
Section D.
Yeah, section D.
So you would move section D down to phase two, and you would move what, uh...
I would just...
Saying he wants to move D to one.
I would put section D and take care of everybody that he's talking about can access all of them.
I thought section D was...
But they're always, they're already in there.
In our mind, the, the, the top group, it doesn't really matter for all times.
Yeah, they're all, they're already in there.
We're, we're just letting, bidding this all out.
These, these are all going to get done.
Yeah, that's all going to be done in one project.
So D is taken, that's taken care of, and I and the stuff at Vowels, which is H and I.
Okay, that was the one that you were wanting to, wanting to move?
H and I.
Well, H is, H is already there.
Can we get, can we get a...
So Vowels is the one that you were talking about.
Can we get Vowels both ways? Y'all think that that needs to be a priority?
I, I would say that Vowels both ways is, is something of a priority, but I'm not today prepared to say what I would change. I would, I would be more inclined to see if we can find some additional funding to, to go with the two-eighty that we know we have in our hands.
We can certainly bump I up and include it in this first bid package and, and see where the bids come back and maybe be able to supplement it with some funding.
Well, and, and let's, let's talk a bit about construction timeframe because we're about to go into a new budget preparation period, and then October first will be a new budget year. Will this construction all be finished by October first, or is it likely to go across two budget years?
There's a potential it could.
What do you think?
Yeah, there's a potential, but I don't know if that'll be fully paid, you know, fully constructed and fully paid sometimes.
Finished, finished and paid, or that, that...
Two different things.
Well, that may be two different things from a cash flow perspective, but I believe our accountant will make us recognize the expense in the year in which the project was completed, so...
I think that num, that timeline is really close to where we hope it will be at the finish line.
So there's not, not that much likelihood that, well, section, section I to me is one that if, if we can figure out how to pay for it, would, would certainly be worthwhile doing.
Okay, well, this is our first look at it, so we can, you know, chew on it, think about it, see if there's something else that, that we want to do differently. But I think the, I think your selection of the priorities looks to me to be pretty good. And I, I think certainly is, if we can roll that up there and see what it comes out, maybe we'll get lucky, the bids will be low, and we can add the twenty-five thousand or whatever it is that's in the ADA and, and come out with, with a full boat.
The one thing I would say is, what are y'all's idea on the, as the alderman on the north-south? I mean, maybe you take Giggleswick out, which is the first one, I think, that jumps to the southern south twelve, and replace that with section I, which is the, I mean, I've always thought, seriously struggling till we get to the south.
You've lost somebody here, hang on, let's...
I'm sorry, I was chatting.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, Giggleswick to me...
It's fine, I just want to make sure that you, everybody heard what, what the alderman Carver was saying.
From a funding standpoint, jumping north, south, north, south, I've always been a favorite of picking which, where we're guessing to start north and go north because it's got the most completed sides on it, but sidewalks, but Giggleswick is interesting to me because, I mean, how do y'all feel about scratching that from the first prioritized subtotal and replacing that with what we're talking about from Cookout to Vowels?
Which one is Giggleswick?
I'm just saying, the Giggleswick...
Which section, give me section number one.
J, I believe it's talking about J.
Jackson to Giggleswick.
The order of J, the J also includes the crossing at Jackson. So you're probably, you could probably take out two-thirds of that would be for the Giggleswick section. So you're probably instead of eighteen, if you want to only do the intersection.
What are you seeing, a lot of foot traffic coming from the Sonic area and just trying to stay down in front of ships? I mean, what are you, what are you trying to do with that?
Well, what we, what we think is going to happen is...
I see a lot more foot traffic on the other side of the road is what I'm, like, getting at.
Well, we've got a lot of development that's happening on the south side coming out of Pleasant Acres, Yellow Jacket there, for one thing. I'm assuming that's part of what y'all are talking about, Edward.
Right, so we have existing all the way here, we finished, we have this Yellow Jacket sidewalk there. Sprint Mart has redeveloped. These two are very close to redeveloping. So I would anticipate this construction probably will happen in the next year to eighteen months.
So they can handle their own sidewalk.
Right, right, so they will, they will have that sidewalk from there. This has been redeveloped, so you have that as existing. The likelihood of this is probably not going to redevelop anytime soon, my guess, but these are all paved surfaces here. So that, that is, we're continuing, we're considering that kind of a segment that, that is existing. This is going to redevelop at some point. This is the Josie's Corner, and they've been looking at that for, for several years now. So that, that eventually is going to redevelop. This has just recently been constructed. So I guess what we're thinking is that this would be the last segment...
That's the last key piece.
On that. And, and Giggleswick is not going to redevelop anytime soon, we don't think. So that's the only reason why we're thinking of going ahead and filling in that gap. Now, to your question about where is that being generated from, I think it's from the, you know, we have a new neighborhood here on Frenchman Street, Pleasant Acres, and then obviously we have Divine Street community there. Because, you know, Highway twelve is a big, is a big barrier for, for all of these neighborhoods, so I think that they can come up and go either way depending if they're going to downtown or if they're coming towards the north.
I do think you have a lot of foot traffic to Fred's and that, from that area.
Oh, I'm sorry, Patrick, yes.
Oh, it's okay. I think the north-south connection is really important off of what Edward just said in that we just, with Highway twelve, we've just created this huge barrier and divide in our city between the residents on the south side of town that might want to make their way to the northern part of the town, say that they want to walk, say that they want to walk downtown. And I know I see that in my ward and other wards too with, with one-eight-two being a huge divide in terms of walkability and people, you know, if, if people want to be able to walk to those areas like downtown, I just think that connectivity is really important in what we're trying to do in the city. So that's the value I see in the crosswalk.
Well, at least the crosswalk anyway.
The cross, yeah, I mean, the crosswalk in itself and then just their ability, because I mean, really, it's, if you're trying to cross Highway twelve without anything that's directing you, or the same goes for the example with one-eight-two. I mean, Edward's heard me say it before, it's like the Wild West in my opinion in terms of safety. I mean, and we, I value people being able to, if they want to be able to safely cross Highway twelve and connect to other areas of town.
So what if we break out the crosswalk from Giggleswick, Edward?
Yeah, we can do that.
Have J, A, J B.
Something like that, yeah.
And then roll I up.
Yeah.
My, my thinking's always been, let's just say a lady's in a, in a wheelchair, I'd rather her cross the highway once and be able to go east to west as far, and our guys want to ride a bike. But then, then what you've got has happened on one-eight-two where you're sitting and sitting, but I'm going to go down here for a few hundred feet and go cross back over, you know, that's not realistic.
So you're talking about keeping, keeping the one there at Montgomery and twelve?
I think you're talking about this segment, right?
I am, I am. I'm just saying in general, as we do this as a board and the next board does this, I think you need to pick a side, which is obviously the north at this point. And at some point, you got to get it continuous, and, and we're doing this, it's a huge try. I mean, this is huge. I'm just saying, this is great work, I just want to make sure we use every dollar because it, you know, it wouldn't make no sense for somebody to constantly cross twelve four times to get from one side of the town to the next.
Have a continuous flow at least on one side.
Huge, big sections of it, which it just does, so I'm not, I'm not complaining at all. I just had questions about Giggleswick, I understand, though. Appreciate your showing up.
Well, at least if we do the crosswalk and we break Giggleswick out, then we can then go through that.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. So we'll, we'll make those changes and revise this prioritized and put that on...
Send it out?
As part of the agenda for Tuesday night.
That'd be great.
One of the things I just noticed, totally off-subject but on-subject, some guys have been riding bikes and cut across from the Hampton to Chick-fil-A, and they're happily, there maybe needs to be a curb cut right there because I noticed the other day a couple were coming, and I want to ride with you, want to have a look at that. That whole Spring Street intersection, I want to look at it.
Okay, yeah, that's a, that's a really challenging intersection, dude, it has a lot of pedestrians. Yeah. And this, this intersection was one of the main drivers for MDOT doing a safety project because there were so many out-of-town visitors here that were trying to go to Chick-fil-A or McDonald's or the coffee shop, and there were several near, near pedestrian vehicular collisions.
At least they got the option now to get on campus with a new sidewalk.
Right.
Yeah, so we, we moved the Stark Road to Lowe's, but we, we moved that down to the very bottom, what caused a, a future development there, because there's a lot of walking still going on that side of the road. But I, I can look at it for, for future development because I know they keep trying to develop this side.
Hopefully, hopefully so.
The, the thought on that, on the bond is that I, I think that that's really a pretty feasible, low-cost segment to build from this entrance of Kroger all the way to Stark Road. But right now, it doesn't connect to anything. We, we have had some conversation about this property redeveloping as well, and there's also a vacant lot here adjacent to the Academy Sports. So I feel like when that happens and that connection occurs, that'll make this need obviously a lot more as well. So I, I mean, I feel like we, we probably ought to plan on doing that in the next two to three years, I guess.
Two thousand.
What, what's that, sections?
Uh, A and B. And if the board continues to add that ADA sidewalk line, you know, this would be, these would be some good projects to tackle with some of those roads.
And we won't be able to transfer some money that this year we budgeted for chip seal projects to, to this sort of thing next year, which would be October first, but in, in the public's eyes, it's kind of all of a, all of a piece.
Since we're on, since we're on the sidewalk, when is the deadline on, on Highway twenty-five to Emerson?
It is...
Slow right now.
It'll, it's the first or second week of July, I believe, and they are behind schedule right now. So they're going to have to really hustle to meet that deadline. But now that the weather's cooperating, we're hoping to help, help make some...
And the one on Lynn Lane is going great guns. If you haven't been by there recently, it is...
I'm over there every day.
It's, it's rocking. It's starting to make us, it's...
It's good.
Alrighty, thank you, Edward. Any other questions for Edward before we let him exit the stage, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for your input.
And the only other thing that I was just going to mention is I met with John Cunningham yesterday about the landfill, and he, we're at a point right now where he's about to submit our, our requirement annual report to MDEQ, and we will then be waiting on them to approve our closure plan, our annual report. He says two weeks, and I said, ha, 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 which kind of means I would expect maybe a month. But anyway, his timeline is to try to get us completed with the landfill and coming into compliance with MDEQ by the end of this year. But again, once that goes to MDEQ, which he said he was going to submit, I believe, either this week, today or Monday, then we would wait on them when we got the thumbs up okay on them, and then we'll move forward with it. So I'm expecting us to be in compliance by the end of this year or early twenty-twenty. So just, just kind of an update.
So we're going to close it down and move on.
Yes. All right, having said that, we have, let's see, if we can go into the board meeting, we have three sets of minutes. Chris, you have blessed those?
I have.
Okay. I don't have any comments that I'm aware of. Mr. Asher, I don't have any, we don't have any, not announcements, but introductions Mr. Ashford, I don't have any, we don't have any, not announcements, but introductions or anything? Okay, all right. And I don't know any board of aldermen comments that anybody wants to have included on the, on the agenda. Okay, public appearance, I'm sorry.
Anything about the basketball team, were we ever going forward?
Well, I was waiting, and Jennifer's left. I was waiting on, the partnership is supposed to do something with, in conjunction with the school. Dr. Passan had said they were gonna do something together, and I would hope that we could join in with them. I don't know what their plans are, but, you know, I was hoping to hear from them soon on that. We have public appearance, that's going to be the banners that Mr. Prater presented us today. Okay, and then under mayor's business, I've got consideration of an advertisement for Miss Hospitality, Ms. Starkville, and then the 50th Annual Freedom Award Banquet. We always put something in the program on those. We cannot do Miss Hospitality on a consent if the board is interested in doing consent at all, because that is going to be David Little's daughter, so he would need to recuse himself. The other two, I don't have any, think have any connection with the city, and if y'all are comfortable doing an ad, then we can put that on consent. We just need to identify the amount, and I think a half-page, Lisa's a half-page, what we've done in the past.
Yes, we, in the MCP, we've mostly done half-pages.
Half-pages, okay. So if we specify a half-page, then that would give us whatever that, whatever that amount is. And if we do that, I'd like to see that put on the agenda as a, if we've got a recommendation.
A half-page is 60, and a four-page is 125 on the NDO CP.
Okay, all right, so do we want to do, anybody have any thoughts on half-page, full-page?
That's fine.
Okay, half-page?
Whatever we've usually done.
Okay, all right, is it? Okay, so half-page.
We've done about 50/50.
I'm sorry?
We've done about 50/50 on those half-pages and four-pages.
Whatever we did last year.
Last year was a four-page.
For, for, what did we do, a four-page for?
For the NDO CP.
Oh, well, let's do a four-page, then, that's fine, let's do a four-page. And so let's put that, we put that on consent, I assume that, I see nodding of heads, consent for that with the full, with the full page? So if we will put that, to reflect that, Lisa? And then the Ms. Starkville, do you have that one up too? Those are more expensive, I think, so, you know, probably maybe half.
Slide into the example. This is an example page of what.
Pretty girl.
There's some. That's not Ms. Starkville, I'm sorry.
Well, okay.
She is.
I just laughed because Joel rolled it back.
Sorry, Joel, no, I didn't recognize her, I was gonna go, oh, you know. Okay, so what do we have for?
So what they're selling at the bottom is on the left, it's what I would say a half of bottom strip.
Okay, that's the half.
And that's the 150, and you can get one of the two 75s.
Well, why don't we do the, what is it, the 150?
Simple price to the other.
Yeah, exactly, same, same as before, okay. So we can do that and then add that also to the, to the agenda, and we will leave the Miss Hospitality until we have a board meeting, so. And then under board business, we have consideration of attending the MML. Any issues with that? Is everyone going this year? Mrs. Strunk, are you going?
Oh, I waffle.
You waffle, okay.
I know I won't be there the last day, so I know.
Alderman Vaughn, you're going?
Alderman Carver.
Okay, cool, all right. Is consent good with everyone on that?
Alderman Little had me dictate that he's not gonna be there either.
He is not gonna be there, okay, okay.
How many, how many days are the mayor of youth council, when we don't want to?
I think they're there two.
Two.
I believe they arrive like at noon on one day, and then they leave at the end of the second day. Like an afternoon and a morning, one afternoon and the next.
And this item number two was put on by Vice Mayor Perkins, and so I don't have any additional history associated with that one. I think Mr. Ashford is gonna be prepared for whatever questions might come up from that. Have you received any further information from Vice Mayor Perkins on questions or issues? Okay, all right.
You got no figures or anything?
He hadn't asked him for anything, I don't think.
I'm not, he hasn't spoken to you about it.
Well, what I've asked Nap to do is give us any information he's got associated with another survey, salary survey study, which I think he wanted to do about every two years? Is that correct?
That's, I just, I will not vote on something, you know.
No, he doesn't mean at all.
With respect to.
Oh, no, I wasn't.
Oh, he just says an approval.
Yeah, it was, no, I wasn't gonna put anything on, no, definitely not on consent, because we don't have enough information, so. All right, we have an airport board for travel, any issues with that one? Go consent on that one. Planning, we've got special events, which we know will not go on, there's three of those, and then a variance request, which we'll need to, need to be taking a look at. So nothing, nothing there from a consent standpoint. Under engineering, we've got the sidewalk project, which obviously will not be consent, because we have an opportunity to think about it and see where we want to go with that one. And then claim stock it, and then we have budget amendments. And I'm going to guess everybody needs to read budget amendments too before we put those on consent.
And, and, please do, everybody read them, but.
Do you want to give a brief?
I, I, I would, Lisa put a good description on her, on her cover. It's recognition of, recognition of revenues that we've received that were not budgeted for. It is reclassifying some other expenses from vacant positions, that sort of thing. So it's just a shuffling of money and recognition of new revenues that we had not anticipated receiving this year.
And probably 50% of the budget adjustments have already been board-approved, such as hiring the new city inspector. It's just getting that in, the dollar amounts.
Okay, well, maybe, do you want to put it on consent? Y'all want to put it on consent?
It was white on the.
Okay, all right. Okay, fire department chief Yarborough wishes to travel, I assume we don't have any issue with that. HR, we're advertising for lifeguards for park and rec. Consent for that one, okay. Advertising for customer service reps for Starkville Utilities. We're gonna need those for sure. That's our, that's our summer help for turnover. Yeah. Utility locator technician, and this is, this is a replacement person?
Yes, ma'am.
Who missing?
Sir?
Who missing now?
Who, who did we lose?
Marcus Gillespie.
Mr. Gillespie.
What's wrong, we can't keep nobody over in Utilities? Every time I look around, we advertising something for the Utility. What's wrong with them now? We can't keep no one over there.
Did he retire?
He voluntarily resigned.
Oh, okay, all right.
Something going, something going on over there, we can't keep no one over there. Every board meeting, we, we advertising somebody in Utility.
Okay, we need, do, do need to advertise those, so consent for that one?
Yeah.
Okay, and then two part-time receptionists for finance and admin. We're losing our receptionists, because they're graduating, so that's a good thing. That's nothing we're doing, we're just, they're graduating, so. All righty, and Nap continues to build his empire with another set on the other side of the page. Authorization to advertise for firefighter positions, this is based on promotions. Okay, so that's, that's another good thing happening, so consent for that one, I assume. Everyone's good with that? Seasonal maintenance workers, again, this is park and rec, this is our typical, typical requirements as we ramp up for summer. Part-time receptionist, is this just to beef up the staff for the summer?
No, it'll be, this is a year-round position, but it's a transfer from previous funds that were used in 299, so we're just transferring money.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's gonna be the end result.
Okay, all right. Well, it said part-time, I was thinking maybe we were ramping up for summer activity.
This is one that's year-round.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then authorization to hire for grounds maintenance workers? Any issue with consent on that one? Okay, and then hire radio operator dispatcher for the police department, so. Then under parks, we've got attending training down in New Orleans, which is fully reimbursable. He can't help it that it's a great place to go, but it is fully reimbursable, so. Any issues with that one? All right, we'll put that one on consent. And then this is the slide, which is going to be donated to us from Junior Auxiliary. And that was the slide that had been a discussion on Facebook.
Next door.
Next door, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, Facebook, well, I didn't say on next door. Like, there's a very good chance that someone from Junior Auxiliary will come for citizen comments just to make a comment about that.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
This is not the slide that caught a hole in it.
It is, it was, this would be a replacement, it's gonna be a freestanding replacement separate from the main unit, but this, yes, that was, that's why we had to get.
But you'll still, you, you said a unit now is in the 150, $200,000 range?
It was 250, I think you said.
Yeah, this is just, this will be a slightly bigger version, but a freestanding version.
Will you just box in that area where the slide started at?
Yeah, it's already done, yeah.
Okay, I'll go check it out.
Will it hold a grown man?
I've been down it.
Just curious, just curious. Okay, all right, if J, a person can come talk about it, we can still put it on consent if everyone's good with this, this is a donation. Okay. All right, then we have Mr. Wilson, Sergeant Wilson, to travel for firearms course. Consent for that one? And then Officer Bibbs for a dare class, consent for that one? Utilities, we have, let's see, what do we have here? More travel for staking class, consent for any of that? Lowest and best quote for parks and park well water service for repairing of a well motor. Anything with that that we need to know about? Jacob, I see you, I don't see Terry, anything?
Just the mud bearing went out, and it's repaired as one of our public water production wells.
Okay, all right, thank you, consent on that one? Okay, thank you. Coburn for the Pleasant Acres water line, we're gonna continue to see things for Pleasant Acres as we go along, so.
Yeah, we're positive.
Yeah, consent, consent for that one? And the brush rotor assemblies on the wastewater treatment plant, that was kind of a surprise to us, right?
Yes, ma'am.
They, they kind of failed?
Yes, ma'am, one of the oxidation dishes, this oxygen to the wastewater for compliance purposes is broken, and so we're just asking them to put that into the big project.
All right, one of those. What was it, was it $9,000, the figure's not on here, is it 9,000?
The, for the task order contract portion, it's 30,000, but then for the construction calls, we're not sure, it could range anywhere between 500,000 and.
Okay, I saw. So you're just rolling them into that bigger bond issue that we're gonna be doing?
Oh, I had seen something for nine, okay, all right, so about 30,000. And then posting a, to be in quotes, what is this, Jacob? Posting a customer privacy policy online to be in accordance with our iOS app?
Yes, ma'am, so our payment, our vendor that handles all of our software stuff for our collections and everything for the billing system, they did an update last week, and part of the update calls the iOS app that they have, that they have as part of the services to go out. And so Apple basically said, without privacy policy posted online, we won't update the Apple app, or allow it to be updated. So they're sending it back to us and asking us just to post whatever our privacy policy is online.
I saw Chris's eyebrows go up, would you like to address it?
Well, yeah, I looked at it. Jacob did an initial draft, and then we revised that draft, and so it's something I think they can go forward.
Okay.
So I blessed it.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, I have, based on a conversation that Joel and I had yesterday with Tyler Technology and the credit card companies that they use, I have asked Chris about taking the same policy and using it citywide for all online credit cards.
Okay.
If it would be, I don't, that's up to the board and the board, of course.
Well, sounds like a reasonable thing to do to me, so.
We want to just update this one and adopt it one time, maybe?
I would think that that would be a smart, efficient thing for us to do, so.
It protects the city from all online credit cards.
Okay, all right, I see no reason, all right. And then we have advertising for bids for the Blue Well, Blue Thistle Well rehab project, so consent for that. All right, that takes us to the end of the session. We have no reason to think we've got an executive, executive session time? Okay, well, good, all right, well, thank you, everyone, in that case. Have a great weekend, Hound State, go Dogs, and beat LSU and beat Arizona State, right?
Right.
All right, thank you, everyone.